Folks, Black Star Network is here.
I'm real revolutionary right now.
Support this man, Black Media. He makes sure that our stories are told.
Thank you for being the voice of Black America, Roland.
Be Black. I love y'all.
All momentum we have now, we have to keep this going.
The video looks phenomenal.
See, there's difference between Black Star Network and Black-owned media and something like CNN.
You can't be Black-owned media and be scared.
It's time to be smart.
Bring your eyeballs home.
You dig?
Today is Wednesday, October 12, 2022. Coming up on Roland Martin Unfiltered, streaming live on the Black Star Network, a Californian whistleblower is outing a racist and misogynistic Instagram page run by federal prison correction officers that makes fun of women getting sexually assaulted and how black men in custody get thrown in solitary confinement for fun. I'll talk to the man who reported this to the Federal Bureau of Prisons. Folks, Tuesday night's LA City Council meeting got real heated as hundreds of protesters took over calling for the resignations of the three Latino council members caught on tape making racist remarks. One of them resigned from the council moments ago. California Assemblyman Isaac Bryan was one of those demanding their resignation. He will join us tonight. We'll also meet Jan Perry, California's 37th District candidate. She'll explain why she should be the state's next Congresswoman. The president of the National Black Farmers Association, John Boyd, will be visiting with us, talking about the class action lawsuit announced today on behalf of black farmers against the US government by attorney Ben Crump. In Texas, an officer is facing charges in the shooting of a teen eating a burger in his car. He's now a former officer. Also, Alex Jones hit with nearly a billion-dollar settlement because he called Sandy Hook a hoax. Now he's crying, saying he doesn't have the money. Hmm, you're gonna have to sell some shit. In our Tech Talk segment, we'll check out the BW Network, the first OTT streaming platform created by, funded by, and dedicated to Black women. It is time to bring the funk on Roland Martin Unfiltered, streaming live on Black Star Network. Let's go. All right, folks, the story about a racist and misogynistic Instagram page mocking women getting sexually assaulted in a California federal prison is making headlines. It also talks about female officers sleeping their way to the top and black men in custody getting thrown in solitary confinement for fun, among other posts. A whistleblower sent a letter to the Internal Affairs Division of the Bureau of Federal Bureau of Prisons in August explaining that they believe the author of the page, Good Verbal, worked at the Federal Correctional Center in Victorville in central California, based on the private jokes and inside knowledge on the post. Now, the whistleblower, Curtis Freeman, has been outed by name only. He says nothing has been done so far, and he's become the victim of vicious social media attacks. Curtis Freeman, an American Federation of Government Employees Local 3969 Union steward, joins me right now. Now, Curtis did not want us to show his face for fear of retaliation. Curtis, glad to have you here on Roland Martin Unfiltered. First off, how did you become aware of this page?
First, let me just say thank you for having me on, Roland Martin. I really appreciate it. I was unaware of the page. I didn't know that they were on there doing this type of activity. Then I started getting text messages from different coworkers, kind of giving me a heads up, saying, hey, just to let you know, these people are making fun of you. They're saying all types of horrible things about you. You probably want to check it out. So, you know, I'm thinking it's going to be on a secret page, but then I find out that it was open to the public. So I was able to go and I was able to see that they would take different videos that I would do on my social media account, and they would pervert it, twist it, cut it up, and use it to fit their narrative for trying to misrepresent me. So it was a few officers that gave me the heads up on that.
And you have worked, you worked there at the prison in what capacity?
I am a teacher in the Education Department, but with the Federal Bureau of Prisons, everybody's considered corrections officers first. So we're all still considered correctional officers as the baseline, but then some of us might have specialty jobs. So for me, I'm a teacher. I work in the Education Department, trying to help inmates meet their goals for getting their GED and other types of rehabilitative programs and learning modules.
Now, now, we don't, again, so these posts, you're saying, they have not been corroborated, but what you're saying is based upon how detailed the information is, you believe absolutely these are individuals who are inside of the prison where you work?
Oh, yes, absolutely. One of the things about where we work, it's almost like high school. And you know, there's no secrets in high school. And there was a team, because this is so serious, and the Bureau, they seem to be taking it serious. So they brought a team from DC, which is our headquarters, central office. And they brought a few of management officials, and they also brought some union officials. And they were touring around, talking to different people, you know, trying to check the climate to see what things are like. And the staff members, a lot of them didn't want to be interviewed. They were scared of retaliation, but they were dropping names. And again, there's no secrets in the complex. We know who these individuals are, and we're well aware of it, but we're just waiting to see if the agency is going to vigorously pursue this and take the appropriate action. But we know without a doubt who the individuals are. Some of them are actually bragging about it, and they're discussing it in huddles with other people. And as you know, you know, loose lips sink ships, and you know, slowly, you know, there's an erosion going on, but we definitely don't.
So you said that they literally were discussing how women inmates were sexually assaulted? Sexually assaulted by other inmates or by actual correctional officers?
By actual correctional officers, because as we know, the scandal that took place at FCI Double in the Northern California, in the Bay Area. And so they would take snippets from the show Orange is the New Black, which was kind of a parody of our, you know, federal prison system. And they showed different scenes, you know, supporting this, what they believe is comedy, talking about, you know, women that were sexually assaulted and abused by staff members. And they doubled down on it. They tripled down on it, and they think it's hilarious. In my opinion, obviously, that's not funny at all. You know, you have inmates, they're there to do their time. We're not there to punish them. You know, so when you have an inmate that is, you force them to engage in these activities, it's absolutely horrible, but they make light of it. They think it's hilarious. And they're proud of the work that they're doing on social media. And it's very evident and apparent when you go on the websites and you see what they're doing. They're proud of it.
And you also talked about them celebrating, if you will, black men thrown in solitary confinement. Are they discussing, are they discussing on this page them being thrown in for no reason whatsoever, just because?
I think that might have been maybe a slight exaggeration on the journalist's part, because, you know, to give, to be fair to her, I don't know if she really understands, you know, the culture. But yes, they did utilize a video. It was an actual useful force in our federal system from prison on the East Coast. And I don't know what caused them to put the inmate in four-point restraints, but they did place the inmate in four-point restraints. And one of the policies regarding that is it must be videotaped for obvious accountability reasons. So I don't know, maybe the videotape got leaked because maybe it was a part of a court proceeding or something. But essentially, when they posted the video, they pretty much were trying to make it seem like they're John Wayne or Chuck Norris challenging, you know, the inmates if they want to mess around, you know, they can find out, you know, we'll stretch them out. Making it seem as though the four-point restraint is something that's used as a punitive measure, but it's not supposed to be used as a punitive measure or something to torture inmates. That's just something that may have to be done because the inmate's behavior might be so out of control that they have to resort to that.
So, and so you're still waiting to hear from the Bureau of Federal Prisons, what next? If there's going to be repercussions or action taken against these individuals, correct?
Yeah, we're waiting. We honestly, we don't know where it's at at this point. You know, in the various articles, you know, the Bureau, they say, you know, the same pre-canned, processed answer or response that, you know, they can't comment on it, you know, they believe it's reprehensible. And if the employees that are involved, if they are Bureau employees, we will, you know, take care of them. They keep saying that, but we don't know. And the interesting thing is, this is so horrible. And this is, in my opinion, it is a national law enforcement issue because you have people from all over the country within the Bureau that are engaging in this page, and they're encouraging this. And I know I had talked to management and I told them that you have to think of this like a fire. You know, a fire can only grow when it has oxygen. And clearly, our complex is providing oxygen to this fire, and institutions and employees across the country are supplying oxygen to this fire to grow. But I want to make it clear that every staff member in our complex, they don't support this. There is a lot of staff members that they think it's reprehensible. They hate it. But unfortunately, they don't want to come out due to fear of what's happening to me. Because I had, I talked to numerous people face to face, and they wanted to come forward. They wanted to say things, but when they started seeing me, you know, get dragged online and talked about so viciously, it caused a chilling effect. So I just wanted to make that clear, that it's not every single employee that's involved in it. It's just those rotten apples. And it's those rotten apples in every department that, for whatever reason, they have the ability to control the temperature and the tone for the agency.
All right then, Curtis Freeman, we certainly appreciate you joining us, sharing your thoughts, and we'll see what happens next with the story.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so very much. All right, folks. Right now, joining us, A. Scott Bolden, former chair of National Bar Association Political Action Committee, Washington DC attorney, Nola Haynes. She is with Georgetown University School of Foreign Service, Cleo Minago. He is a social architect as well as chief advisor to the Black Men's Exchange. I'm going to start with you, Cleo. You did work for quite some time there in California, dealing with the sheriff's office, I believe. And one of the things that this Department of Justice has done a lot, they've been very aggressive in going after corrections officers and wardens for their treatments of prisoners, getting a number of convictions. And I can't think the last DOJ that was this aggressive going after what's happening in state, in federal prisons. And this is, these places have long been a hotbed of abuse, of individuals being raped, sexually assaulted, being belittled, being targeted. And this is why you have, and elections have consequences, you know, for all the people out there, you know, who say, oh, Biden, Harris not doing a damn thing, to have a Department of Justice that is aggressively confronting what's happening in prisons, that wasn't happening under Trump. That wasn't happening under previous Republican presidents. And that matters because typically, those folks look like us.
I haven't had the opportunity to see the outcomes of their investigations, the work headed up by Biden and Harris. However, I know that it's necessary and that it's important.
No, 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 no. Now, you say, have seen the outcomes. We've detailed on the show the indictments and the convictions. And there are individuals in state and federal prisons who are now in prison because they were beating people, they were assaulting people. I mean, I, you know, we get the emails, you know, constantly about another warden or corrections officer. We think we did one just the other day, who got convicted because they were physically assaulting and beating inmates.
Well, that's refreshing to hear. Like, again, I hadn't researched that myself.
Yeah, we covered a lot on the show, so.
Okay, well, I need to pay closer attention because this is a revelation to me, because I used to work, as you know, at Biscaloo's Prison in East Los Angeles, when I worked for the deputy, for the chef department as a deputy. And my first year as a cadet, I had to work in a prison, and that's where I worked. And I saw the most insane abuses and racism and torture and accusations that were, that were not true. And this black man being set up, and I myself, while in uniform, because I protested this, was put in the tank, in uniform. So that's how serious it was back then, because they were mad at me for raising similar issues like this brother is raising. So I'm glad to hear that the DOJ is reading things out, because it's a very corrupt system. People do not care about prisoners. You know, people don't worry about the safety of people who are called inmates and who have been incarcerated. They figure they have done something wrong, they'll lock them away and throw away the key. And whatever happens to them, that's what they get. And what they don't consider is that the prison system is a bastion of racism and mistreatment of black people. And you already heard from this person about black people being put in solitary confinement, and I'm a witness to that. I'm also a witness to black men being beat. I'm also a witness to white people, men getting, getting peripheral treatment in prison. So I'm glad to hear that the DOJ is doing something, and I hope they pay attention to this case. And I hope this brother who's trying to do something about it makes it through. And I want to mention that I know what it's like for somebody to use your picture and your profile, who's mad at you, and come up and make up some stuff viciously online, see what they can do to sit you up for some type of character assassination. So I wish him luck with that. But again, I hope the DOJ pay some attention to this, and I need more information from you about what they've done so far.
Again, Scott, you know, you, look, you know, we go through this, you know, constantly. And the thing that, I mean, I mean, here's a perfect example. Just give me one second. I'm going to pull this up. We covered this on this show as well. This was just, this was just September 21st. Four, four former Georgia correctional officers sentenced for assault on inmate and cover-up that took place at the Valdosta State Prison. That's one example that took place. We've covered, again, other examples as well that have happened. And of course, the Bureau of Prisons, Scott, falls under the Department of Justice. And as we know, in the last DOJ, they did not want to be aggressive in going after police departments. And one of the things that we have, again, just in this society, there's this attitude of, once they go to prison, to hell with them. Who cares about them? They don't matter. People actually laugh about the abuse. They laugh about these things. And that's one, and that's one of the problems in terms of how the public sort of responds and acts as if this is really no big deal when we are talking about the, you know, when people are in jail. And even though you may go to, you may go to jail, you still should be treated like a human being. We shouldn't have individuals who are being beaten, who are being sexually harassed. We look at the conditions in Parchment Prison in Mississippi, individuals and how they were not, how they were not being fed properly and walking in water and, and all sort of heinous conditions. And it's just, this country, we act as if they're animals, and so to hell with them. That's part of the problem with the public.
That's the new enslavement in 19th to 20th century. It's the new enslavement. You can talk about Mounds Prison Penitentiary in West Virginia with Jimmy Gardner, Collinsville in Joliet, Illinois. You can go to any state or federal prison in this country and find this corruption because the system is built for corruption, extortion, embezzlement. People who have done something wrong are still human beings, but there's rampant rape and shakedowns and gang activity based on race and color and culture. And so, you know, there's a, there's a tolerance of this in the prison system to the detriment of prisoners, but also perpetrated by the actual guards themselves, whether it's rape of women or men, and this type of tolerance. Now, the reality is that this individual who you just had on, Curtis, he's a steward, which means that if they know who put this video up or put the Facebook posting up, they put it up publicly. They're comfortable with exposing this, if you will. And they're probably union members that he's leading, if you will. I doubt it would be management, but it could be management. But what should be most disturbing to your viewers is the comfortability of those who would post this. I don't know whether it's still up or whether it's been taken down or not, but you got to move swiftly. But lastly, on top of comfortability, is that we've seen other videos or posts like this in other cases. And these recent posts that Curtis is combating are just after the prior, these other posts in other prisons, if you will. So they know what impact or chilling effect it's going to have on the perception of the prison system, and they simply don't care. That's why police brutality continues to be an issue, because the police unions don't care. Because if they care, you wouldn't have police officers shooting black men and women. You wouldn't have them being abused. And so you've got to change the culture and change who you're hiring and test who you're hiring to ensure that they believe in freedom, justice, and equality, and that they see prisoners as human beings, not as animals or perps or dogs.
Nola, I'm pulling up, again, this is another, is a perfect example. Hopefully, it comes up. Let's see here, September 2nd, from the DOJ, the former deputy warden at the Mississippi State Penitentiary at Parchment was sentenced to prison for assaulting inmates. I've, we've done on this show, not just Mississippi, but Kentucky, a number of folks there as well. And so that's, this is why you have to have the oversight in these places in order to protect people. You do not lose your constitutional rights just because you go to prison.
Absolutely, you do not. And we're in a moment right now, you know, we are coming out of a Me Too moment. We are coming out of a George Floyd moment. And right now, we are definitely in a moment where the Pandora's Box to racism and inhumanity and indignity is in full display. And I think that these sorts of stories only continue to tell a narrative that we've been speaking about for a very long time. As you said, Roland, you know, you talk about these issues on your show all the time. But outside of that, you know, you hear these sorts of stories in many different ways all over the place throughout history. And right now, people are really starting to see that, you know, it's not just black folks complaining. It's not us just wanting to be loud. It's not us, just here we go again, here they go again. No, these things are happening. These dehumanizing things are happening in every single sector. The fact that it's being celebrated on social media, you know, tells another part of this story, just about how much black life is just thought to be entertainment, you know, to completely dehumanize, dehumanize, dehumanize black bodies, you know, historically. When we have people standing in front of lynchings, you know, we have people with photos with different body parts of black people. Our suffering has always been entertainment, and this is yet another example of it. And my heart goes out not only to Mr. Freeman and what he's incurring, you know, by speaking up to this injustice, but the women that are being brutalized, and it's being also put on social media for entertainment. As our country, as some people try to move our country backward, as some of us try to move forward, we see two things always. We will continue to see that women, that we are just things. We are just ornamental things, apparently. We are not supposed to be active in society. We are supposed to stay home and have children. We are not supposed to work. We are not supposed to be educated. So of course, our suffering in our bodies will just be entertainment. And the same has always been for the black male body. We can go all the way back to slavery and talk about how the black male body has always been a source of awe and entertainment. And this is just yet another ugly episode of this. And while this is gross and inhuman, I am happy that there is a light that's being shined on it. And Roland, thank you once again, because you are that voice in our community. You are not just a voice in the community, you are that legitimate voice. You're not just some guy off in a corner shouting, you know, at the margins of the internet. You know, if it's on Roland Martin Show, people are going to be talking about it. So thank you so much, not just to talk about the show, but to bring Curtis Freeman on to hear his voice, you know, because that's, that's what needs to happen. Now, I don't know what the next steps are, because every single day, we are being, you know, treated to our global mistreatment. I don't know what the next steps are, but each day, we're getting fed bits, bits of information about how we are being treated in every single situation. And there needs to be a lot of conversation and discussion about how do we move forward? You know, I know we're going to talk about LA a little later on, but this is yet another example. example of what happened at the city council. Okay, that happened, you know, people were outed, people now see who you are, so what are we gonna do about it? And that's where I'm at with all of this.
Um absolutely. And and again, I I just want, and again, the 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 reason I'm going through this is because I need people to understand that the work is actually being done. The work is literally being done uh as we speak. Um this right here uh from August 29th. Again, this is where Christian Clark gets credit for that Civil Rights Division. August 29th, former former Eastern Kentucky Correctional Officer pleads guilty to assaulting restrained inmate. 27-year-old Jeffrey T. Havens is going uh to a federal prison as a result of that. That's one particular uh one right there. Let me go to this uh next one right here. Uh again, uh this right here, uh this is five days ago. Former Louisville, Kentucky Corrections Officer Darrell Taylor, 32, uh of course convicted of of using uh excessive force uh against a pretrial detainee five days ago. Uh that actually took place. Uh here is uh another story and and the reason and and again, folks, this ain't the sexy stuff. CNN ain't covering this stuff. You're not gonna see the for some reason, the White House uh Press Secretary not talking about this here. I'm gonna show y'all one that's gonna blow y'all away. This is it, this right here is in uh, let's see here, California. A federal prison chaplain was sentenced for sexually assault and lying to federal agents. James Theodore High House, 50, uh is gonna spend 84 months in prison by five followed by five years of supervised release for repeatedly sexually abusing an incarcerated female and then lying to federal agents about his misconduct. All right? So that that was on August, that press release dropped on August 31st, uh 2022. Let me um read, okay, here is Hawaii. And and I and I'm walking you through this because for the folk who don't who understand the work is being done. July 11th, 2022, three former Hawaii correctional officers convicted of civil rights violations for assaulting an inmate and attempting to cover it up. Uh and again, um uh and a fourth one previously pled guilty for his role uh in that. Okay? There you go. And those those individuals, they they actually in custody pending their sentencing hearings. And so I got one more that I'm gonna pull up here. And this here is out of Georgia. Former Georgia Supervisory Correctional Officer pleads guilty to felony for his role in attempting to cover up an assault on an inmate. Uh that also was in Valdosta State Prison, Gary Stanton, 31. So what did you see? Hawaii, Mississippi, Georgia, they've done action in South Carolina, California. This is why you have to have an active Department of Justice fighting these issues. And so that's why the what what this brother stated uh in terms of what about reporting to the Bureau of Federal Federal Prison is so important because it absolutely matters. And so every time we see these convictions, we're gonna talk about it. That's why we have this show. I don't give a damn what Fox News and CNN and MSNBC does because they got their own agenda. We are showing you the work that's being done by the Department of Justice to hold these these prisons accountable for their treatment of folks. And again, they largely are beating folks who look like us, and so these things matter. This is a consequence of who you vote for when you go vote for President of the United States. I gotta go to a break. We come back, we're gonna continue talking about what's happening there in California uh with the LA City Council. Crazy there, breaking news, one of those three Latino council members caught on tape making racist comments. She has resigned. The other two gotta go as well. Folks, don't forget to download the Black Star Network app, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. Please support us in what we do. Your dollars make it possible for us to travel around this country covering the issues that I guarantee you the other networks do not cover on a consistent basis. Send your check and money orders to P O Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. Uh I made a trip to the post office today. I go once a week, uh and it was filled with a lot of your uh checks and money orders. And so I appreciate that. Uh but we have to raise a hundred thousand dollars each month, y'all, between now and the end of the year uh in order to make sure that we are covering our costs. Uh because again, all the stuff that we do, it actually costs money. Uh and we're not getting the advertising support that CNN, MSNBC gets. So trust me, your donations absolutely matter. Cash App, Dollar Sign, RM Unfiltered, PayPal's RM Unfiltered, Venmo is RM Unfiltered, Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com, Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. And don't forget to get your copy of my book, White Fear, How the Brown of America is Making White Folks Lose Their Minds. Bim Bella Books, Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, IndieBound, Bookshop, Chapras, Books-A-Million, Target. Also, download it from Audible or you can get it from your favorite black bookstore. We'll be right back.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Libraries empower the community with education. Liberia Economic Development Initiative, LEBIE, is hosting the International Life Changers Awards and Liberia's Bicentennial to celebrate LEBIE building the country's first modern public library and technology center. Join event host Roland Martin, our honorees Reverend Dr. Jamal Bryant, Zernona Clayton, Thomas Dorch Jr., Dana Lupton, Dr. Tammy Grace Deal, on October 29th at the CNN Center Atlanta. There are no public libraries in Liberia, but together we can change that. Get tickets at LEDINow.org.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Hey, I'm Donnie Simpson.
Hi, I'm Eric Nolan.
I'm Shontay Mu.
Hi, my name is Latoya Luckett, and you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
All right, folks, some breaking news out of California. LA Councilwoman Nori Martinez, she has resigned her council seat. Now, remember, she resigned as the council president. She now has resigned her seat from the city council. She was one of three city council members uh who was caught on tape, caught on tape making racist remarks about African Americans, about the black child of a federal city council member. Uh so Kevin DeLeon, Nori Martinez, Gil Cedillo, all council members, Ron Herrera, who leads Los Angeles County uh AFL-CIO, he's already been forced out, he's already resigned. So of those four, two have quit. The pressure continues on Kevin DeLeon and Gil Cedillo for them to also quit. Last night, folks, it was a contentious city council meeting and F-bombs were flying left and right as protesters showed up making their thoughts clear about uh this leak audio. Listen to this.
First of all, fuck you. Fuck DeLeon. Fuck Nori and fuck Cedillo. Fuck this whole meeting right here because it's illegitimate. The people are shutting this shit down afterwards. This whole thing is racist. The fact that they had the audacity to sit here in front of the people that they mocked, that they minimized, that they demonized, that they marginalized is unacceptable. The fact that you are trying to continue with business as usual is unacceptable. 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 We are the people and we are the voices who matter in this room right now, not yours. I yield the rest of my time, but fuck this.
Well, uh she was uh real clear in how she felt. Um folks, the uh the white city councilman, Mike Bonin, who him he and his husband adopted a black child, uh that was the child that they were they were talking about on this tape, saying that child should be beaten, talked about his behavior. Uh Bonin gave a tearful speech uh where he expressed uh just his disgust with what he heard. Here's some of that.
I'm a dad. Um. I'm a, fuck. Uh I I am a dad who I'm a I'm a dad who loves his son in ways that words cannot capture. And I take a lot of hits and and hell, I know I practically invite a bunch of them. But my son, man, that makes my soul bleed and it makes my temper burn. And I know I'm not alone because Los Angeles has spoken and it feels the same way. When uh when when the LA Times called me on Saturday, I was out of town and I was away from my family. And um the reporter summarized some of what was on the tapes. And my first instinct as a as a father uh was to implore them, don't run the story or at least be vague, please say made racist remarks about my son. But I didn't want to see the specifics in print. I didn't want him to have to hear them or or read them someday. And I also knew that the tapes contained much more, learned even more in the past couple of days, much more than the comments about my son. And as the uh as as the the white father of a black child, you you stumble and you and you and you and you fuck up and you 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 try to do your your best to be a parent and an ally. And I get it wrong a lot, I get it right sometimes. I I knew that I did not want this story about virulent anti-black racism to be centered on an angry white dad. Uh and you know, I was afraid this was gonna be in California section. It's been in international news. You know, the the these words, they cut uh and 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 they stung. Um, you know, I know that I can never really know or comprehend or feel the the weight of the 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 daily relentless racism, anti-black racism that my son is gonna face. But man, I know the fire that you feel when someone tries to destroy black boy joy.
Joining us now, California Assemblyman Isaac Bryan. He attended the meeting and expressed his support for the council members to quit. Uh glad to have you here, uh uh Assemblyman. And this is what what's crazy is the fact that they're acting like they can't leave. I mean, Martinez resigned today, but Cedillo and DeLeon, they actually are acting as if they can survive this and oh, reconciliation? No, 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 no. You can have reconciliation, but you can't be on the council.
Right. And and I wanna, you know, thank Nori Martinez for doing the right thing and stepping down and stepping aside. Yesterday, Kevin DeLeon and Gil Cedillo showed up to the council meeting. The audacity to look the public in the face like everything was okay and we all needed to calm down. I wasn't gonna let it stand. I was proud to be there. I stood behind Mike Bonin as he gave those remarks and I felt the weight of them then and I felt the weight watching them again just now.
Um and uh you know, get folks to understanding of of what you're hearing because what these individuals, um you know, what these individuals said on there, it it was it was they they were not pushing back, was racist comments, but they also were talking about how to limit black power.
Right. They they focused Latino power building, which is important in Los Angeles. It's important to build political representation, but they focused it and rooted it in black erasure. And that is wrong. And they used the tools at their disposal to effectuate that, whether it was uh tokenizing a black council seat in crisis, whether it was drawing districts uh that would think about how to carve up uh institutional assets so that they would someday be represented by Latino members, whether they would draw the kind of districts that would fight off opposition from other Latinos running who wanted to build in solidarity with all communities in Los Angeles, including black communities. There was everything on that tape you needed to be infuriated. And it wasn't just black folks they took shots at. There was antisemitism, uh there was anti-indigenous uh things being said, the Armenian community in Los Angeles that is proud and strong, they took shots there. It it's unforgivable.
Um I I'm looking at this tweet right here uh from a uh from Tenille, who's a justice journalist. And he said, he says here, "WELL TO SEE SOME OF THE MOST RECENT TWEETS BY KEVIN DELEON ABOUT THE WORK HE AND NORI MARTINEZ WERE SUPPOSEDLY DOING ON BEHALF OF TENANTS RIGHT BEFORE THE LEAK OF A RECORDING THAT EXPOSED HOW THEY WERE REDISTRICTING IN LOS ANGELES TO DILUTE THE POWER OF RENTERS." I mean, so we now know exactly how they felt uh in real time because of what they actually said that came out of their mouths as opposed to these uh BS tweets.
Right. And and I'm not just an elected official in Los Angeles, I'm also a renter, right? And so to to see the way they would marginalize people who have been struggling during the pandemic, struggling to get their economic footing and mobility, uh there was political violence on those tapes. And they've actuated that violence and policy decisions over the last year from that tape was when it was recorded to when it was released. But I have uh no doubt that decisions had been made even prior to that that had a negative impact on the very same communities that they've shown to show a disdain for.
And obviously, the two of them have not quit, but the pressure is going to continue. Uh it is going to be relentless.
Oh, yeah, they're they're coming down. I mean, once the President of the United States has has got you on the radar uh and condemned your actions and called for your resignations, it it's purely hubris that allows you to continue pushing this on. But the people won't have it. The people are ready to heal and unify. All the communities in Los Angeles are ready to unify, but it doesn't start until this accountability is taken. We need those resignations.
All right, Assemblyman Isaac Bryan, look, keep us abreast. Uh we're gonna keep watching this story, but you're right, they absolutely have to go.
Appreciate you, brother.
Thanks a lot. Uh uh Nola, I wanna start with you. Uh you're there in Los Angeles. I mean, this is explosive. It's been talked about everywhere. Uh and the thing is, they pissed off a lot of different communities, black people, but they pissed off the Koreans, they said the Armenians, they pissed off other Latinos. I mean, they hit everybody.
You know, um, it hits home, it's very personal, you know. Um, first of all, when I first moved to California in high school, you know, I'm from the deep, deep, deep south and I'd never experienced racism. Now, how oxymoronic is that? Until I moved to California. And when I attended high school out here, it was my first time seeing race riots, um Mexicans and blacks. I'd never seen anything like that in my life. And mind you, coming from New Orleans, I actually thought a lot of Latinos were black, you know, black is a spectrum to us, you know? So I was really confused about all of this. And you know, unfortunately, when you live in LA, you know, especially, it exists, it's there. You know, when I was an undergrad at UCLA, it was palpable. You know, don't let a Latino dude like you and think you fly. You know, you're gonna catch all types of heat, you know, and you're thinking we're all in this together, but unfortunately, you know, you learn that we're not. You know, you hear the kind of um really nasty kind of slurs that are said about you and um you you try to reconcile with it. It is something that's very painful. And for many, many years, I worked, I worked in uh spaces with a lot of amazing social justice oriented Latinos for first generation community college students at UCLA. But in that space, as one of the few black people in that space, it was hard because, you know, you would feel like resources would go um more to the Latino programs more than to the one or do black focused programs. But you were in there because you had allies and we were all trying to work towards something, right? So I have literally been in the thick of it. I have, I've heard it, I've seen it, it's painful, especially people that really kind of look like you, you know? And yes, maybe some of the cultural different, there are cultural differences and there's, you know, language differences, but at the end of the day, you know, everybody's rocking with melanin, you know? So it's it's kind of a very hard thing to reconcile and to understand. And then on another personal note, you know, I've been in spaces with Kevin, you know, um I've I've, the first base I was, I met him was at USC um at the Schwarzenegger Institute, um actually where the governor was actually there. And then in another situation, at a Kamala Harris um fundraising event, and I've seen him, you know, in spaces where he's um proud to, you know, be the ally and all these different things. So when all of this happened, my heart just broke into a million pieces because I'm like, okay, you don't you don't know where to feel safe. You don't know who your people are, right? You don't know like who's really about this social justice life. And when I sat there and I heard this tape, you know, with other people that know these people, it was heartbreaking. It was so crushing, not just for me as a black person, but also for the browner um Latino folks here that are also discriminated against here in LA.
It's my power, Cleo. Cleo, it's my power, pure and simple. Uh and so when you look at uh the folks who, look at Latinos there, these folks are like, oh, we got the numbers and we want more power. And it's a little hard to now run away from the recording now we know exactly how you feel.
Well, this is profoundly amazing because the attitudes and perspectives of black people have been going on like this in Los Angeles for years. I am from Los Angeles. Every historically black community black community that I used to be a part of or have associates involved in are now all Latino. And the Latinos have been scorched earth and vicious in some cases around taking over black property and demoralizing and marginalizing black people. Now, yes, Koreans may be upset, Armenians might be upset, so and so is upset, but black people are the ones who are the most displaced, not the Koreans. These other people who are supposedly upset right now because frankly, pardon me for sounding so cynical, it's politically correct now to act like you care about black people because this very powerful group called Latinos have gotten busted. But nobody has had black people's back as they become the majority of the homeless, as, as they become the majority of the displaced and as they have been the victims of shootings by some Latinos who, who got mad at them for, for fighting to keep black communities historically black. So this is deep because it's on tape. However, I'm concerned because everything always rides back to the bottom of interest, like police brutality is still going on, but it's not on Channel 7 or, or any place except for Roland Martin, of course, but it's not part of the, the, the news chain. So we not hearing about it. My concern is that black people have been out organized, out politicked, out empowered and have gone from a major community to a small village that's dwindling. So this is a powder keg. I mean, black folks knew about this as well as others and this is not news. What's news is that there was a tape, just like police brutality was not news, but we got phones, we got smartphones and now everybody could see it was already there. I'm concerned about if black people are going to relapse after this dog and pony show into powerlessness because Latinos are an army. Black people can be an army if we unified and get over the internalized oppression and the conflicts and the second guessing of what we should do to have black power. I mean, even that brother who was Freeman in the prison talked about how other people agreed with him, but he didn't say nothing.
Got it.
So my concern is that we might relapse after this, you know, this, this media coverage back into the same normalized powerlessness. And we have an ego, our, our egos are glad that some people are being busted. But what are black folks going to do on the ground to get some power in this moment and get some audacity and focus in this moment? Because it will go away. Because like I said before, in my close with this, the Latinos have an army and the people who are getting ready to resign and be forced into resignation, they're going to, they're going to go into an army and they're going to have support one way or the other. What are the black folks going to do? Are they going to have each other's back now when they realize that they are at risk because of how other groups have treated them? And again, these Armenians and Koreans and stuff all upset, I'm not having it because black people have been under attack the whole time and now it was PC to say I care.
So Scott.
Yeah, you know, um, are you really surprised at this conversation among Latino elected officials? Are you surprised or are you surprised that it was caught on tape and released to the public? Because it's offensive because it gave you a window into a power discussion among a Latino elected officials. But skinship ain't friendship. And don't you almost politically have to presume that whether you are quote, um, a non-majority, uh, group and you're growing with power, that power is contagious and these conversations weren't really rooted in racism, but were rooted in power. I'm not letting them off the hook.
There's both.
Because I don't see how a, a, a black kid who's three, four years old jumping off a float and acting up with all had kids or nephews and nieces and kids are going to do what they're going to do. But to label the kid a little monkey in a political conversation is just highly offensive. If you know how hard it is to be a parent, let alone a white gay parent of a black child, black male child. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not surprised that the conversations take place because I think those conversations take place in, in black political conversations, white, uh, Hispanic, Korean, you name it, but they let their hair down and somebody reported it, right?
Good.
All of us have to have respectful political conversations, but not to the detriment of other, uh, groups of color. And to me, that's the most offensive part.
Well, bomb liners is here. Now we know how they feel. Their ass has got to go as simple as that.
But you knew that already.
No, 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 Scott. That's not true. No, no, Scott, that's Scott. No, Scott, that's not true. The reality is they were fronting and they do what, no, Scott, no, you can't presume. Okay? You can't presume. And here's the deal. There, there are people all around the country, Scott, all around the country. There are people all around the country who front real well. They say the right things in front of other people. They tweet the right things, but in their private, uh, situations, it comes out. And the only way we actually know is when, it's when tapes, it's when tapes are revealed. So bomb liners is here. And again, power and racism go together. It can't always be a power. It's power and racism. Uh, speaking of racism, folks, we come back, we're going to talk with, uh, John Boyd about the lawsuit that, um, the lawsuit that Ben Crump is filing on behalf of the black farmers against the federal government. Of course, they are still waiting, uh, to get, uh, their part of the billions of dollars Congress set aside. White folks are now suing saying, oh, this is unfair, but they were not crying when Trump gave the $25 billion out and mostly went to white farmers. We'll talk with John Boyd next, right here on Roland Martin Unfiltered. Also, ooh, y'all, uh, Alex Jones, he might, he might start trying to have to sell some of his stuff, uh, because he got slapped today with a nearly $1 billion judgment for his comments regarding the Sandy Hook families. Wait till I show y'all a little crying he did with Steve Bannon. Oh my God, I don't have the money. Mm-hmm. They gonna come for your ass. See, see what happens? See what happens when you just run your little mouth? You know what? Matter of fact, there's a video I'm going to play because, uh, he messed around and he found out. Folks, download the Black Star Network app, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. Y'all watch it on YouTube and Facebook. Hit the damn like button. It ain't that hard. Okay? Y'all riding for free. Hit the like button and then you commenting. All right. When I come back, we should be at more than 1,100 or 1,500 likes on our YouTube page. Okay? So get it done right now. Stop playing around. Also join our Bring the Fuck Fan Club. So your checking money orders to P O Box 57196, Washington DC, 20037-0196. Cash App, Dollar Sign, R M Unfiltered, PayPal's R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo's R M Unfiltered, Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com, Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. And get your copy of White Fear, How the Brownie of America Is Making White Folks Lose Their Minds, Ben Bella Books, Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, IndieBound Bookshop, Chapras, Books A Million, Target. Also download from Audible and you can order through your favorite black bookstore. I'll be right back.
When we invest in ourselves, we're investing in what's next for all of us. Growing, creating, making moves. The move is all forward. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Pull up a chair, take your seat at the Black Table with me, Dr. Greg Carr, here on the Black Star Network. Every week, we'll take a deeper dive into the world we're living in. Join the conversation only on the Black Star Network.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
I'm Deborah Owens, America's Wealth Coach, and my new show, Get Wealthy, focuses on the things that your financial advisor and bank isn't telling you, but you absolutely need to know. So watch Get Wealthy on the Black Star Network.
When you talk about blackness and what happens in black culture, we're about covering these things that matter to us, uh, speaking to our issues and concerns.
This is a genuine people powered movement.
A lot of stuff that we're not getting, you get it and you spread the word.
We wish to plead our own cause. Too long have others spoken for us. We cannot tell our own story if we can't pay for it.
This is about, uh, covering us.
Invest in black on media.
Your dollars matter.
We don't have to keep asking them to cover our stuff. Please support us in what we do, folks. We want to hit 2,000 people, $50 this month, wait $100,000. We're behind 100,000. So we want to hit that. Y'all money makes this possible.
Checks and money orders go to P O Box 57196, Washington DC, 20037-0196. The Cash App is Dollar Sign, R M Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is R M Unfiltered, Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com.
Hey, what's up everybody? It's Goffrey, the funniest dude on the planet.
Hi, I'm Israel Houghton. Apparently the other message I did was not fun enough. So this is fun. You are watching.
Roland Martin, my man, unfiltered.
Been frozen out.
Facing an extinction level event.
We don't fight this fight right now. You're not going to have black on you.
Black farmers are tired of waiting for their part of the $4 billion debt relief program. Now they are taking the federal government to court in a class action lawsuit. The plaintiffs say the government went back on its word to black and other minority farmers when the relief, when the relief program, uh, after white farmers complained and filed a lawsuit. Today, attorney Ben Crump announced that, uh, he was filing this national lawsuit on behalf of the National Black Farmers Association. Uh, they have been greatly impacted, uh, by racism, uh, when it comes to the US Department of Agriculture. They've been fighting for a very long time. And then finally, when the money was allocated by Congress, they thought, uh, finally some relief. Well, then you had white farmers, excuse me, white farmers led by that racist Stephen Miller who worked for Donald Trump. They filed lawsuits claiming reverse racism, that this was grossly unfair, even though under Donald Trump, some $25 billion went out to farmers and black farmers barely got any of that money. Joining us now is John Boyd. He is the president of the National Black Farmers Association. John, I'm glad to have you on the show. This is what the USDA announced. They released a statement. They said the USDA strongly supported the, the ARPA Section 1005 program and was ready to make payments to direct loan borrowers. However, the $5 billion that was intended to help farmers was frozen by three nationwide injunctions that prevented USDA from getting payments out the door. The government vigorously defended this program in the courts, but because of these injunctions, the $5 billion provided in ARPA remained frozen. This litigation would likely have not been resolved for years. Your response to that?
Well, I don't think the administration moved quickly enough to get the money out in the first place. So they had enough time to get the actual debt relief to black farmers, but instead they, they drug their feet and allowed, uh, white farmers not just to file one suit. They, they filed 12 different lawsuits in very conservative courts and, and they picked conservative judges to file these complaints in. So while my dad said the grass is growing, the cows are starving. So we still didn't get the money. And then the administration came out and repealed it and replaced the language.
Now you say repealed it, what does that mean?
They repealed the $5 billion in, in debt relief. Well, $4 billion in, in debt relief and, and there was $1 billion for, uh, discrimination. We're going to talk about that too. But they actually repealed it and replaced it with language that says, uh, farmers who have been distressed. So now we have to compete with white farmers and this actual pool of money, uh, to Roland. So, so instead of the money's going to, uh, the 14,000, uh, black and other farmers of color. And I want to remind you, those 14,000 are actual farmers. Those are the persons who actually own land, which is why I was fighting so very, very hard for debt relief. And white farmers said, well, you know, uh, it's unconstitutional. It's, it's some new loan program that is excluded white farmers. It's anything further from the truth. Debt relief, I was on your show in 2009 saying how we didn't get injunctive, injunctive relief in two forms, land in inventory. The government had 1.5 million acres of land that came from black farmers and we were supposed to get the land back. I didn't get my, my land back through my settlement and none of the other black farmers got it. And the second part of that injunctive, injunctive relief was, uh, the actual debt relief. So white farmers was getting debt relief the whole time with ease in this country while black farmers were getting farm foreclosure notices like we're getting today since the language has been repealed, Roland.
So, so here you have the Biden administration saying, look, we tried to do all that we could. Uh, and, and your dealer is like, no, you could have done more. And so now in essence, y'all are in limbo. Y'all, y'all are stuck. Y'all are, I mean, at the end of the day, you're frozen. You can't get the money. You still, people are still dealing with the issues, dealing with COVID. Uh, and it's sort of like you got to wait till this thing is resolving the courts, which could take years.
And that's, they said, that's why they repealed it. But also what the repeal did is open Pandora's box. So now the administration, uh, USDA started foreclosing on black farmers. And that's why I was asking the leadership, Senator Chuck Schumer, had a meeting with him about a week or so ago, uh, Clyburn and other leaders, Democratic leaders, to put a real farm moratorium in place.
Right.
While the administration tried to figure out what the sand world they're doing. We should not still be losing our land because the administration drug its feet. And Roland, you also covered when they said they were sending former, uh, former Secretary Vilsack back to USDA. Uh, as you know, I wanted Marsha Fudge and I think I would have had far more better results with, uh, a former Congresswoman, Marsha Fudge than we're getting with Secretary Vilsack. Vilsack is a very skilled politician where he says, uh, just enough to get by as far, as far as it goes for black farmers. But I don't believe that his heart is in the right place in resolving this. So, so here we got 14,000 farmers of color, uh, no, no debt relief and we traded 120%, 120% debt relief. So you get 100% write down, 20% to, uh, pay their taxes and so on and so forth. We exchanged that language to appease white farmers to say farmers are distressed, distressed farmers, uh, which are now white farmers.
Which is race neutral language.
Race neutral.
As opposed to, and, and again, that, again, when, when Trump with his export, whatever the hell he was doing against China, I mean, again, they sent $25 billion to, that mostly went to white farmers during, during the four years, uh, he was there.
But it all went to white farmers.
And these folks here now tripping about this $4 billion that's going to black minority farmers.
Well, you know, and, and that's the case here. And what the listener always needs to understand is 1.9 trillion acres of land in this country. Black farmers own 20 million acres of land. Why do you have to have all of our land out of 1.9 trillion acres of land in this country? Why do you need every single acre that came from, from, from black farmers in this country? And they're still trying to take our land. So for the people that don't understand what the fight is about, the fight is about saving historical land that came from, uh, from slave families, uh, sharecropping families who were able to buy land after the Civil War. We don't want to lose another foot, another acre.
Right.
For some nonsense.
And I'm trying to actually find that that was a grab somebody had put out that showed the amount of land.
We lost some land.
That black farmers have lost over the years.
From the Virginia Delmarva line all the way down Mississippi, Arkansas, Louisiana. That's where you're going to find black farmers in this country, in the deep south. Wherever there was a footprint of slavery and sharecropping, that's where you're going to find, uh, uh, black farmers. And that's what the whole fight is about. And that's why I was pushing, uh, President Biden to put a real farm moratorium in place that would, that would include guaranteed loans, uh, through these banks who got bailed out and they still want to take our farms, direct loans and other agricultural lending institutions such as Farm Credit. Should not be selling our farms while we're trying to figure what the sand world, the administration is doing.
Questions from the panel. Scott, I'll start with you.
Yeah. Uh, good evening. Um, the, the issue with the legislation was that it was race based versus race neutral. Uh, and you had these legal injunctions. And so you've got a lot of legal hurdles to come over and I presume you're not a lawyer, but, uh, from a legal strategy, strategy point, are you suing for all the past ills of black farmers? Or are you suing to get your $4 billion that was promised, but then later repealed?
What was this question, Roland?
Uh, are you suing for, in totality, or are you suing trying to get the $4 billion?
We're suing to get, uh, debt relief for all 14,000, uh, farmers of color. That's the first thing. The lawsuit entails two parts. And first of all, I would like to recognize Ben Crump for coming to the rescue for black farmers and taking this case on when many others didn't have the guts and tenacity to do so. He stuck his name on that complaint. The second part of that is the piece for farmers who have been discriminated against. That piece, Roland, was not tied up in federal court, yet and still Vilsack didn't settle one case for farmers who have been discriminated against. So he, so now they want me to believe all of a sudden he's going to put this measure in place for me. It's like the fox watching the hen house. I'm going to trust a very agency that discriminated against black farmers. to all of a sudden, we're going to fix this for you, John, right now. Just bear along with us. That's the message that I'm getting from the administration. So the lawsuit entails those two. Mr. Barna, who was out there today, they've garnished his social security check. They're trying to foreclose on this farm. Man's 80 years old. His wife died a couple of years ago. Why are you trying to take this man's farm when he was supposed to get 120% debt relief from the United States government?
Wow. Cleo?
How long, my first question is, how long has Mr. Crump been with you?
Well, he just announced the suit today.
All right. So I've been trying to follow this. Since you started bringing this to the public's eye and to the government's eye, has there been any level of progress? And what is the perfect answer to what you're requesting?
I would say there's been many hurdles that we've overcome. We've had two settlements over the past 30 years. And this is a three, almost four decade old fight now. And a lot of this issues has been followed by this man here sitting to my left. He's highlighted this issue time and time again. I fight with PepsiCo. I fight with all of these big companies. This is not a new issue to this show. He's been covering, he's been covering this show the whole time. So you have to, you have to keep in mind that this isn't a new issue. Ben Crump worked with us on another issue with the agriculture company some years back. And he stepped up to, stepped up to the plate. The real fix would be, one, the administration stopped farm foreclosures, a full cross-the-board moratorium, and honor its commitment to the broken promise of paying all of the black farmers debt relief, 120%. This is a broken promise. The black farmers signed the contracts, everyone signed them and sent them back in, thinking that they were going to get 120%. They made other financial obligations based on the 120% letter that we got from USDA. And then they repealed it. And they repealed it and then say, "Well, you know, boy, we don't want you to say anything about this. Just bite the bullet and look the other way." I can't do that to people like John Barna, who was out on that mall today. And we bought our mule here today, Roland.
Yep.
My old mules are dead. I've been fighting this so long, struggling 40 acres, they dead. I got a new mule. His name is Jesus, a new white mule.
Yeah, show the video.
And I bought him up on the mall today.
Name Jesus.
Yes.
Okay.
Jesus is the mule's name. And I figure, you know what?
White.
We got to have Jesus if we want to overcome the struggle of our forefathers. This fight is about our forefathers. Many generations, Roland, that me and you and others, leaders in this country, we're standing on their shoulders. And we can't let them down by losing all of our land. If we lose all of our land, people, we've lost all of our history, all of our knowledge, all of our well-being, all of our family structure, came from the farm. And for these proud black people, guess what? You're only two or three generations away from somebody's farm. You may not want to admit it. They may say, "I ain't never going back to the farm." Don't run away from the land. Land is power.
Right.
Food is power. Guess what? We facing a food shortage. If you know a black farmer, you need to be his friend today and go out and buy his produce.
Nolan?
Well, thank you, first of all, so much for this fight, this continued fight. As a very proud Southerner and going to Shippuden, Mississippi, every single summer on my family's farm, I really do appreciate the organic everything, the lifestyle, and just the rich culture and history that exists on black farms. So my question is for you, what can we do? How can we help with messaging? Because I feel like, you know, Roland is out here doing the Lord's work, Lord knows, you know, and he's out here fighting these battles. But this isn't, this isn't a fight that I see, you know, on black social media all the time. This isn't something that I see in the black blogs. What can, what can we do to help with messaging?
The first thing you can do is when Roland puts this link out about what happened with Black Farmers Tonight, that link should go to everyone in your social media content. Facebook, Instagram, share his link. Because do you know what a white lady said to me at Virginia Tech? She said, "Mr. Boyd, I didn't know that there was such a thing as, as black farmers." Here's a young lady who specializes in, majoring in agriculture that don't know the history of why we were in America in the first place. We were, we were here slaves and then sharecroppers and survived Jim Crow to work the field and become farmers right here on American soil. So the best thing you can do is to share that information, share this segment and spread it around. Everybody should have this, this segment in their inbox today on somebody's social media.
Well, that's, and that's the thing that, you know, I get a kick out of these folks. "Oh, man, you ain't sitting here fighting for black folks." Somebody actually sent me something saying, "Why haven't you been discussing the plight of the black farmers?" And I'm like, "Food? You have no idea what the hell you're talking about." This thing go back to Washington Watch, the first show I had in '09. And see, and the problem that I have, this is the big problem that I have. And I'll have people tell me, "Well, you know, there's a lot of things happening in black America." But the reality is, when I said, "Why haven't civil rights groups and other groups had a mass demonstration in Tennessee to get the $500 million for Tennessee State?" The reality is, y'all have been doing this and our large civil rights groups and other groups have not brought their folks out. And what I keep saying to people is when, and the reason we played that "Where's our money" thing before. This is about land, it's about money and power. And what happens is, what we do is, we turn out in mass numbers for police shootings.
We sure do.
We turn in mass numbers for criminal justice, which I totally understand. We turn in mass numbers what's happening in Los Angeles. This right here, this is a money issue. And I keep saying, "If you ain't discussing the money, you not having American conversation." And so, and so the battle has been trying to get black folks to understand this issue. And this is not, "Oh, I'm having a slavery flashback." No, it literally is, as Chuck D always says, "They ain't making no more land."
They ain't making another foot of land. You know, they making raggedy cars every day. And you know, my grandfather always said, you know, "I can't leave, you can't leave your PhD and all of these things. It's not transferable to your children." But he could leave his poor raggedy farm to his 12 children. And that's exactly what he did.
When you own a house, you also own the land that the house on. It's the exact same thing.
It's the same thing. And the most powerful tool that you can possess, people, is land ownership. Don't, don't be confused by this other stuff. This building that we're in, it's sitting on somebody's land. Everybody that's watching, you're sitting on somebody's land. You can either own your own or be trespassing on somebody else's.
I mean, you're absolutely right. And I'm just going to use an example. It wasn't land, but the example I'm about to use goes to just unfortunately how some of our folk think. I was speaking at a Chamber of Commerce event, a black Chamber of Commerce event in Houston. And they had a live auction. And they had a diamond pendant that was in the live auction. And the diamond pendant, I think, sold for about $900. Then they had a tailored suit. The tailored suit sold for $1,500. And I was sitting at the table and I said, "That's a damn shame." And somebody said, "Why you calling, why you saying it's a damn shame? You know, that's, that's $900 and $1,500. That's $2,400 for the organization." I said, "You do know you can sell that diamond pendant to somebody else. You can't sell no damn tailored suit."
That's right.
"'Cause it tailored just for you."
Tailored just for you.
And they, and they looked at me and they were like, "Man, I ain't ever thought about it that way." I said, "Think about how you spend money."
That's right.
And I, so the point is, what is actually an asset or just what's on your ass? It's a difference.
Two hands are scratching. And Roland, I want to take people back to 2009 because that's exactly when we were trying to get the settlement finalized with President.
If you don't know, Pickford.
Yes, the former President Barack Obama. I called you and I told you, I said, "Roland, this thing failed nine times in the Senate." And you said, "Could you get the..." And I said, "Yes." You asked me, "What legislators are giving you problems, Boyd?" I gave you the names and your listening audience started blowing their phones up. That's the power of what you do from, from where you're sitting. And that's the difference that you made in those black farmers' life. 22,000 black farmers received $12,000 for taxes and $50,000 for a settlement. Yes, a lot of them, a lot of them didn't get it, they should have got it. But 20,000, 20 plus thousand, yes, got $1 billion in this, in this country. And guess what? I think I would have been stuck in the Senate if you hadn't raised a voice in the black conscience of people watching. That's the power of unity and having a voice like you that can come in and say, "This is what's going on right now."
Well, keep us abreast of and what you need our folks to do because it's absolutely taking our audience and pushing them to call, pushing them to write, pushing them to email, pushing them to tweet. Is there a particular hashtag y'all are using?
Not a particular hashtag, but I would like the listeners to support the lawsuit. If you have an organization, file a petition in federal court and support our lawsuit. That's something that black organizations can do. I know Ben Chavis was out there for the black person. He said he was going to support it. We need people that are head of these organizations to file a petition in federal court and support it. Go to nationalblackfarmersassociation.org and support our organization. Everybody should be a member. Everybody eats, don't they? People just think farming and, "Oh, I don't have any relationship to farmers." You just ate dinner somewhere. It's about seven o'clock somewhere in this, in America. And a whole lot of people just ate dinner. So support us. That's what we need right now.
So what I'm gonna do is, I got a group, I got a chat group with about 18 civil rights groups. And definitely hit them up with that. Folks, this is John's Twitter feed. Y'all should be following him. Right here is JW Boyd in BFA. That way you can get details as things are happening with what's going on. As you see, he follows me, I follow him. And so we need to do that because I just keep telling y'all, this is about money. It's about money. It's about power. We're talking about $4 billion. You heard him say in the Pickford, that was $1 billion. People running around hollering about reparations and what we need. But you're waiting for somebody to vote on that. This was $1 billion black farmers actually got. A billion. This is $4 billion they're trying to get access to right now. And so, and I keep, I keep, you know, I said something, people got mad at me a few weeks ago. I put up something about Nick Cannon and Eddie Murphy having 10 kids. And I had about probably 700 or 900 comments on my Instagram page. Yet, when I post something talking about us trying to access the $322 billion spent every year in the advertising industry, it might have eight to 10 comments. And I said, "Now, wait a minute. Which one has a greater impact on black people?"
That's right.
The $322 billion or Nick Cannon having 10 kids?
And you know, and that's right. And I would like to challenge some of our significant African-American leaders to get behind us. We have, we have NBA stars, we have boxing stars, we have football stars. Go to Roland's link tonight and tweet and comment about this, man. That's the first thing that these leaders can do. Just don't share that nonsense.
When they see the views, when they see that that link gets two and three and four and 500,000 links, then they understand, okay, hold up, folks paying attention. And see, people understand, they watch that stuff. When they see it gets 1,200 or 1,500, they go, "Oh, man, we can go ahead and ignore them."
Yes, that's correct. So.
In fact, I had just to show the last point here. That was a particular company we went after. And they called a black ad agency. They said, "Hey, can you get us the impressions on his comments on social media?" And so the ad agency called me and they said, "Roland, can you send me the numbers?" And when I sent them the numbers of the traction we got on Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, on Fanbase, Snapchat, TikTok, LinkedIn, and they saw the views, they were like, "Oh, yeah, we need to have this meeting with him." But they looked at the metrics. They saw the impact of what the video did. And that's why, and trust me, politicians, they understand that. So when they start getting those phone calls, and that's what changed that. And so we got to keep doing that because this is about money and money and power. Well, John, we certainly appreciate it, man. Thanks so much. You keep giving them hell, you know, I'm right here and we'll support you on everything you do.
Keep doing what you're doing.
I appreciate it, Doc. Folks, gotta go to break. We come back, we're going to talk about a sister, she's running for Congress in California. We also going to talk about Alex Jones. Lord, he is crying, crying, crying because he just got hit with nearly billion-dollar judgment by a jury in Connecticut. He ain't happy. Plus our tech talk segment. So lots we're going to talk about, folks, on the show. Download the Black Star Network app. John laid it out, y'all. Now you understand why black-owned media matters. I'm not interested in white validation, okay? I spent six years at CNN. I've been on MSNBC, ABC, CBS, NBC, Fox News, BBC, all of them. I appreciate going on. But when you own your media, you don't have to ask someone permission to have a John Boyd on. And guess what? We can then go as long as we want to because I don't have to ask anybody. But we have to support this, y'all, right now, right now. When I look at my numbers, we have 903,864 YouTube subscribers. We launched the Black Star Network on September 4th, 2021. We haven't even hit 50,000 downloads of the app. Understand, y'all, when I go and talk to advertisers, they're looking at our downloads. We should be at 100 or 200 or 300,000 downloads of the app. All of our content is on the app. This show, the six other shows on the Black Star Network, we got three shows in development. So trust me, we're building because we're not interested in asking for permission. Download it on your Apple phone, your Android phone, your Apple TV, your Android TV, your Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. And if you got an Apple phone and you got Roku and you got Samsung Smart TV, download them all three. It's all good. You can actually download it. Trust me, these things matter. Also, your dollars matter when you support our Bring the Funk Fan Club. I can't tell you enough about the resources. We are in a constant battle. People ask me all the time, "Man, I wish you can cover this and cover that." I can't cover stuff for free. You know why? I got crew, gotta pay them, airfare, per diem, hotel room, gas in the vehicle. That's all real. And so we're not bringing in 600, 700 million dollars like MSNBC or 800, 900 million like CNN or 1.5 billion like Fox. So when people say, "Man, I wish we could be, we give a black CNN," y'all already know what the hell that even means because you don't understand how much money that they're actually getting paid. And so, trust me, when I tell you, we need 2,000 people this month in October giving an average of 50 bucks. If you can give more, great. If you can't give that, we appreciate every dollar. If 2,000 of our people, like right now, there are 3,000 people literally watching on our YouTube channel right now. If 2,000 people this month gave 50 bucks, that's $100,000. Let me be clear with y'all. I need y'all to understand. Our monthly expenses are $184,000. $184,000. That's this show, six shows, rent. Our, y'all didn't understand, our Comcast business bill is $3,000 a month because we got to have fiber. This ain't no regular house wifi, y'all. And so understand, when I'm walking y'all through what expenses are, this is real. And so your dollars matter. And so if you give during the show, I'm gonna shout folks out at the end of the show. But checking money orders can go to P O Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. Cash App is Dallas sign RM Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is RM Unfiltered, and Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com, Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. And again, when I ask y'all also to hit the like button, understand, you are impacting the algorithm. And so if we get 1,500, 2,000 likes, that impacts us and that increases the revenue because we now being recommended by YouTube more. So I'm not asking you to hit the like button to make me feel good. That also drives revenue for us. And I can tell you, last month, last month, we had a record amount of revenue on YouTube. We were $70,000 higher than we've ever hit because people were recommending our videos. And so when John says, "Click, recommend the link, hit the like button, forward it," that also drives revenue. So I just need y'all to understand what's going on here. So please support us. Got to go to a break. We'll be right back on Roland Martin Unfiltered.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
I've always said this, rather than to continue to fight for a fair piece of the pie and the equal slice of the pie, I want my hand on the knife that cuts the pie. And to that extent, who bakes the pie and who puts it in? And that's one of the things that got me involved in going into politics in the first instance. I'm tired of people making decisions for me and mine. I want to be a part of that decision-making process. And luckily, it has paid off in terms of seeing the progress that many people in America have made, particularly people of color. One thing bothers me now that we seem to be losing that. Saying that we've got to be more concerned with other people. Saying that we've got to be more concerned with other people than those people who are here. We built America.
When we invest in ourselves, we're investing in what's next for all of us. Growing, creating, making moves that move us all forward. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Libraries empower the community with education. Liberia Economic Development Initiative, LEDI, is hosting the International Life Changers Awards and Liberia's Bicentennial to celebrate LEDI building the country's first modern public library and technology center. Join event host Roland Martin. Our honorees Reverend Dr. Jamal Bryant, Zernona Clayton, Thomas Dorch Jr., Dana Lupton, Dr. Tammy Grace Deal. On October 29th at the CNN Center Atlanta. There are no public libraries in Liberia, but together we can change that. Get tickets at LEDINow.org.
I'm Jember Owens, America's Wealth Coach. And my new show, Get Wealthy, focuses on the things that your financial advisor and bank isn't telling you, but you absolutely need to know. So watch Get Wealthy on the Black Star Network.
Hatred on the streets, a horrific scene. White nationalists rally that descended into deadly violence.
White people are losing their damn minds.
An angry pro-Trump mob storms the U.S. Capitol.
We're about to see the rise of what I call white minority resistance.
We have seen white folks in this country who simply cannot tolerate black folks voting.
I think what we're seeing is the inevitable result of violent denial.
This is part of American history. Every time that people of color have made progress, whether real or symbolic, there has been what Carol Anderson at every university calls white rage as a backlash.
It's the riot of the Proud Boys and the Boogaloo Boys. America, there's going to be more of this.
There's all the Proud Boys, guys.
This country is getting increasingly racist in its behaviors and its attitudes because of the fear of white people.
The fear that they're taking our jobs, they're taking our resources, they're taking our women. This is white fear.
I'm Shontae Mu.
Hi, I'm BB Winans.
Hey, I'm Dolly Simpson.
What's up? I'm Lance Gross and you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
All right, folks, today's Black and Missing Devon. Devon Hester has been missing from Philadelphia since July 28th. The 15-year-old is five feet, six inches tall, weighs 125 pounds with black hair and brown eyes. Anyone with information about Devon Hester should call the Philadelphia Police Department at 215-686-8477, 215-686-8477. I mean, that's gotta be sad. I mean, July, y'all, this kid has been missing almost three months. And here's the deal. This is why we do this segment. This story is not on mainstream media. Every single day on this show, Nola, Scott and Cleo, we do a Black and Missing segment specifically for this. And it is crazy to me that this kid has been missing since July 28th. I haven't heard his name anywhere else. And when we do these stories, I mean, it's like constant. I mean, I'm astounded a lot of times, you know, we have a lot of recent where it may have been last week, a few days ago. But my goodness, this shows you how, this is why people were going off on that idiot Kanye and that dumbass Candace Owens about white lives matter. You cannot tell me a little white kid, a little white kid who is 15 years old goes missing on July 28th and then the whole country don't know about it for three months. That's just, that's just, that's a fact, Nola.
It is a fact. And it's very interesting because it seems like for different groups, for certain groups, certain things are entertaining. So when we are murdered, when, you know, when there's something gross and ugly, that seems to be what entertains people about blackness. But when young white kids go missing, that seems to entertain, you know, everyone else about them not physically being where they are supposed to be and everyone hoping that they are still alive. So it's just very interesting to me how people seem to be interested in us once we are dead. But everyone else seems to get, you know, the courtesy of hoping that they get to come back home. Well, actually, let me not say everybody else because that's not true either. So, you know, I'm, I'm really emotional for not, this child that's missing and scared and Lord knows all types of other things because I'm speaking affirmatively that this child is still alive. I can't even begin to imagine what the family is going through.
Right.
I'm just so happy that you are, once again, you know, sounding the alarm on this child not being where they are supposed to be.
I can tell you, Scott, there's no way, I don't know what I, what my state of mind would be if my nephew, who's a freshman, has been missing for three months.
Oh, man, I can tell you, as a mother of three, as a son, as the son of parents and father of three daughters, it would just be devastating. And my daughters are all grown and it would just drive me crazy. But listen, man, it's hard being black in America. Ain't nobody looking for Jamal and Jamila. You don't see their names up on Amber Alerts or anything, you know? You don't see local news or national news looking for our black children. And trust me, whether they'll run away or not, they need to be found. And so, you know, it's a great service you do. I've been doing the show for a while and you added it a few years in, I think. And, you know, what would be interesting is whether, as you post that and then subsequently, how many of these children that you post have been found or it's worked out, or even if it hasn't worked out, based on your postings? That data, you should share that data at some point.
Yeah, what we've done in the past is we've done stories where, we've done stories where unfortunately, folks have been found dead. But we also have done the follow-up when they've actually been found. If I think, if I think about when we started doing this every single day, frankly, that hasn't been a lot. Hasn't been a lot when they've actually been found alive. And so many of the folks that we've actually mentioned in this segment still, to this day, have not been found. And that, and that, Cleo, is just heartbreaking.
And may never be found.
Right. And so we talk about how significant human trafficking is in this country. And we're talking about people who literally come up missing and we never hear from them again.
Roland, I'm very moved by you putting this issue on display like this and alerting our community and whoever else is watching about this phenomenon because with so many things affecting black people, this one is missing. And yes, we often talk about how CNN and the other white news networks don't cover it. But what always concerns me as a behaviorist is that black children are witnessing this neglect. Black children are witnessing this gap in their humanity being affirmed. And I'm telling you from doing talks all over the country and having spoke to several mental health conferences as a keynote, et cetera, that we are not engaging our children and inviting them to unpack or even detect their own trauma that they're living with. And they get elected because we keep on acting like we can't talk to them about quote unquote race things because we don't want them to be angry. But I'm here to tell you and your audience that that white folks ignore is, okay, that's interesting. But we're ignoring our children's mental health inadvertently by not inviting them into a conversation about, baby, how do you feel about this information? Including that black children are missing and that they're not getting the kind of press that white kids get? These realities, police brutality, et cetera, that black children are witnessing. I've spoken at conferences before where I address the young people in the audience, and particularly the boy children, sometimes start weeping. Because this is a patriarchal society, despite the gains made by women. Overall, the presumption is men first, men are the most important. And historically, black males in a patriarchal society have not been allowed to be fully male in terms of being in control of their lives and their destiny, black men in particular. And boys are feeling this attack on them. And there's not a whole lot of space being created for them to actually bring voice to that trauma. So I want to re-thank you for raising the issue of missing black children. But also I want your audience to understand that children are also watching this and experiencing this disappointing reality of black erasure. And they should be taught by their parents that they can actually express themselves about these issues instead of ignoring the white supremacy mythology and black trauma is a real phenomenon that we're dealing with.
And again, and this is, and I just want people to understand, when I'm talking about why we do what we do, why this is important, why these things matter, I don't know of any other black-owned media outlet, I don't know of any other black targeted media outlet that every day has a dedicated section to somebody who's black and missing. That's why we started this. Was it after the white woman in Colorado? I mean, we've had the Black and Missing Foundation on. I've had them on, going back to my TV1 show. But when we saw all that ridiculous coverage where, and again, it was important to be covered it. But all these national media outlets was covering this white woman who came up missing, who later was found dead. That's when I said, damn that. Every day, we're gonna have a Black and Missing, if somebody's black and missing, we're gonna have a segment every single day on this show, alerting you of that. Because if we don't do it, we know they're not gonna do it. And so that's why Black Own Media Matters. That's why I tell y'all why you gotta support. Because if we're not here, if we're not in business, guess what? There's no outlet for that every single day. And that's why Independent Black Own Media Matters. And I just, it's amazing, you know, people, you know, I hear these people, they out here, they talk all this nonsense about, oh, new black media, who doing this, who doing that? It's a whole bunch of people out here who are claiming to be black media. And all they're doing is talking about what other folk not doing. But they're not doing anything on the affirmative. They're just sitting here involved in gossip. I don't care about those people. I tell if y'all watch, listen to those people, go right ahead. They mean nothing to me. But this is about how we affirm black people. And so hopefully, by profiling this every single day, somebody will see that picture or see that name and then will call somebody and say, hey, I saw Roland Martin's show and I just saw this kid and call the cops. Because if no one ever says it, then they don't even know they're even missing. So that's why that's critically important. All right, folks.
Roland, I think it's important to mention that you are true black media. There's a difference between white accommodationist, blackface media and black media that's truly involved in black life and cares about black people and have black people's back. You're not buffooning and jumping around and doing what's quote unquote popular or doing what's safe for white folks. You're really getting in there on behalf of black people and I appreciate it.
I appreciate it, Cleo. Thanks a bunch. Folks, Congresswoman Karen Bass is running for mayor of Los Angeles, which means that she'll be vacating her congressional seat. Well, there's a runoff for that particular seat. My next guest is one of those folks. She's a former councilwoman in Los Angeles, Jan Perry. It's the 37th district. The runoff is gonna be on Election Day, November 8th. She joins us right now. First off, Jan, before we talk about the congressional race, I gotta get your thoughts about the absolute mess with the LA City Council that you served with the three folks who were caught on tape, one of them who has now resigned, but the other two, Gil Sedillo and Kevin DeLeon, they still haven't stepped down.
Yeah, I, they came, I turned out of the city council in 2013. And so they came in the group after me. But I, I know all of them, some better than others. And, you know, it's a strange feeling to hear people say such horrible things when you've had conversations with them recently. And, you know, everything seemed to be normal. But apparently, it wasn't. And so I think about what Dr. Angelo always said to us when someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time. So now our eyes have all been opened.
So let's talk about this congressional, congressional race. You're in this runoff here. And what are you saying to the voters as to why you should be the choice to replace Congresswoman Karen Bass over your challenger?
Well, I have the greatest and most significant amount of experience getting homeless people off the street and into services and into housing. I represented Skid Row for 12 years and I was able to get a large number of people off the street. I built and founded, funded the largest emergency shelter in the city to give law enforcement an alternative to taking people in on a 72-hour psychiatric lockup and then putting them back out in the street. It still exists today. It's got 650 beds. And I continue to build out a pipeline so that people could have choices and options and a path forward to recover.
Obviously, that was one of the issues that came up in the recent debate between Rick Caruso and Congresswoman Karen Bass as well. And also, you have, so you have a lot of tension on that. But you also have a lot of attention. Republicans are talking about crime, crime, crime. And that's also appealing to Democrats. But I keep telling people, you can't deal with the crime issue unless you deal with the economic issue, the housing issue, the food issue.
And the mental health issue.
Right.
Because we have a serious, we have serious mental health issues here that you don't have to go very far to find because these are people living under the freeway overpasses, on the sidewalks. I was just downtown today in the industrial area and the people were telling me about, you know, folks setting fire to their tents, burning up the block. So it's, it's serious. This is not something that can be ignored. And I would say that mental health recovery services is at the top of the list.
Absolutely, absolutely. From an economic standpoint, what are you saying that you would do for the residents in your particular district, especially African Americans, being able to access and gaining equality economically?
Okay. Well, first thing that I have to tell you is that COVID laid bare all the things that we, we knew intuitively, but COVID made it very, very clear. The lack of broadband access for families, for children who were at home for more than a year and therefore not adequate, no adequate internet access. That hurts the whole family. It cuts the children off, leaves them behind in their path, the learning and moving forward. It also hurts small businesses in our community. And I know you're familiar with the demographics of Los Angeles. So, you know, people live everywhere. But, you know, there's still a high concentration of African Americans in the middle of the basin in the areas that have been historic. I'm sure you know what they are. But, you know, so we got some infrastructure issues. We have small business issues. We have the need to continue to build out that system of housing that's affordable. We're losing our single-family homes that, you know, your parents, my parents, grandparents may have been able to get with the GI Bill after World War II. And those blocks are rapidly disappearing. And that's, that's the erasure part. Because then land speculators and real estate investment trusts come through and buy up the paper, block by block, tear these single-family homes or the duplexes or the triplexes that people put their life savings into. And then they disappear. And then you get not more affordable housing, you get market rate housing. So that doesn't really help deal with the root causes So that doesn't really help deal with the root causes of what we need to rectify here. And that's what I'm going to work on.
All right then, uh, Jan Perry, uh, good luck in your race. Uh, it'll be one of the many races that we'll be watching, of course, uh, on election night as Democrats try to hold on to the House and also try to hold on and expand their lead in the United States Senate.
Thank you very much, Roland.
All right, folks, going to a break. We come back, Alex Jones. He got to pay up. He talked a whole lot of smack. A Connecticut jury just smacked his ass. We'll tell you all the details when we come back. All right, folks, uh, you're on YouTube, hit the like button, y'all. Listen, hit the damn like button. How is it 3,000 y'all watching and we are not, don't even have 3,000 likes? It's a click. It's free. It don't cost you nothing. My Lord, hit the button. All right, y'all, uh, don't forget also download the Black Star Network app, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV. We appreciate that. Also, again, join our Bring the Funk Fan Club. Y'all, I'm not joking when I tell y'all, uh, what we're doing. I told y'all, Comcast bill every month is $3,000. The rent on this place is $15,500. Uh, when you talk about, uh, what we're doing here, we have to, we have to finish installing our light, uh, lighting grid, uh, here in this studio, uh, that's gonna be an additional $10,000. Uh, come to me. So you see right here, folks, you're watching me on a robotic camera. We got literally nine other robotic cameras, uh, all around, uh, this studio. We're gonna finish up the green screen because we've got, on election night, we're planning a minimum of six hours of coverage on election night. We're gonna have probably 30 people coming through our studio space. We've got to make, be sure to get our furniture, uh, in here as well. And so when I talk about what the monthly expenses are, that's not, not even traveling, covering stuff, that's $184,000. That's covering 15 staff members, that's covering the six shows that we do, producing those shows. And I told you, in two weeks, hopefully by October 24th, we'll be launching our 24-hour streaming channel. Uh, we have signed a deal with Amazon. It's gonna be on Prime Video, Amazon Fire, and we're also negotiating with several other people for our 24-hour streaming channel. And so when you're watching this show on our OTT platform, we're gonna be literally streaming a 24-hour streaming channel, those costs as well. And so we're truly building a black media network. That's what we're doing. This was never about me having a show. It was about providing opportunities for others. And so we've got six shows we do every single, uh, week. My, this is two hours a day, for Roger Muhammad's show is two hours a day. We have daily shows, of course, from Greg Carr, Deborah Owens, Jackie Hood Martin, Stephanie Humphrey, uh, of course Roland with Roland, there airs every two weeks, a great interview with, uh, former Virginia Governor Douglas Wilder right now. Uh, and then there's another daily show with a female host we're working on, it's in development. We've got a fitness show, uh, we're, we're working on, a cooking show that we're working on. Uh, so those three shows we wanna launch in January 2023. And so a lot of things are happening, but it takes dollars. So yeah, I'm fighting hard. I was meeting with a major bank in New York last week, uh, about advertising. Uh, there was a major deal. I cannot wait till we announce that we just, uh, uh, agreed to as well. I'm dealing with several other corporations. I'm going to Chicago next Wednesday to speak to a major corporation, uh, as well. And so I am fighting the fight on the advertising side, but your dollars also a matter. You have made it possible. I'm telling y'all, our fan base, you being critical, uh, in terms of the resources you provided for us to be able, uh, to do what we do, uh, in excess of $600,000 last year that you gave, but our goal is to hit, if we get, but the goal is still 20,000 total fans contributing on average 50 bucks, which comes out to be a million dollars a year. $50, y'all, is $4.19 a month, 13 cents a day. That's literally what we're talking about. Some people have given more, some have given less. We're looking for an average of 50 and so that matters. Uh, and so please, send your checking money orders to P O Box 57196, Washington DC 20037-0196. Cash App, Dollar Sign, R M Unfiltered, PayPal is R Martin Unfiltered, Venmo is R M Unfiltered, Zelle is Roland@RolandSMartin.com, Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. We'll be right back.
When we invest in ourselves, our glow, our vision, our vibe, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
Hi, I'm Dr. Jackie Hood Martin, and I have a question for you. Ever feel as if your life is teetering and the weight and pressure of the world is consistently on your shoulders? Well, let me tell you, living a balanced life isn't easy. Join me each Tuesday on Black Star Network for a balanced life with Dr. Jackie. We'll laugh together, cry together, pull ourselves together and cheer each other on. So join me for new shows each Tuesday on Black Star Network, a balanced life with Dr. Jackie.
When we invest in ourselves, we all shine. Together, we are black beyond measure.
You know what's on the ballot. It's not just legislation and policies we believe in, it's democracy, our democracy. There's a choice on the ballot between freedom and fear, between cruelty and compassion, between chaos and community, between voting or violence, and the end of rights generations have fought for. The extremists have a plan, a roadmap for a nation where your voice is silenced and your vote is a memory, where they count their votes and cast hours aside. That's why this year, this fight, this vote is so important. Register, engage, volunteer, fight back against the disinformation that is there, and most of all, vote, because your vote is all that stands between our future and theirs.
We are in sunny South Dallas. The election is coming up. It's super important that folks know who they are voting for, but more importantly, what they are voting for. Y'all, we got some free shirts and free lunch right over here.
Freedom is our birthright. No matter what we're up against, we're sending a message in Dallas and Texas and in this country. We won't black down. That's what this bus tour is all about.
The housing cost is one of the most capitalized areas that we have found. People who are marginalized, that are brown and black, we are suffering the most. And I think that we have the biggest vote and the biggest impact in this election.
I'm voting for affordable housing for sure.
We should not be paying the cost of a utility failure because our elected officials are too proud to say we need help.
I know that we can bring out our people to vote. It's a part of our birthright. It's a part of our heritage and surely it's a part of our prison and part of our future.
That's right. That's what's up. And we won't black down.
Forward that message to five friends, cause in that message, it's got links to how to get registered, how to check your registration status.
Like I said, 2:30, we'll start, um, rendezvousing right here on this street.
I am voting to let our voice be heard in the rural communities that, hey, we are people too. There are things that we need.
Free shirts, free food and lots of power.
We are in Longview, Texas, where black voters matter, 365.
Whatever type of oppression a white supremacist throws our way, we will not black down. We are in relentless pursuit of liberation of our people.
Freedom is liberation for black bodies and black communities to make economic change through political power.
Freedom is choice.
We won't black down.
We won't black down.
We won't black down, y'all.
We won't black down.
We won't black down.
We won't black down.
Yo, what's up? This your boy Ice Cube.
What's up? I'm Lance Gross and you're watching Roland Martin Unfiltered.
Oh, Alex Jones got his ass handed to him today, y'all. That fool got hit with a $965 million judgment as a result of, uh, him calling the Sandy Hook massacre a hoax. Now remember, he got, he lost in Texas and so now he got hit with 965 million in Connecticut. So the judgments now are in excess of $1 billion. Uh, he was arrogant all throughout the trial. He was combative with the judge, with the, uh, with the, um, uh, the, uh, the attorneys. In fact, this right here, y'all, is what happened as the verdict was being read. Let me show you how arrogant his ass is. This is what he was saying when he was live on the air as they read the verdict. Watch.
All right, you inquire.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, hold on one second. So now what you're playing there, that was testimony. I don't wanna play that. Uh, this right here, go to my iPad, I'm gonna play right here. This is the verdict, this is the verdict being read.
And from Remington, ain't gonna be happening, ain't no money.
Our verdict as to damages in this case, we award damages to each plaintiff and against Alex Jones and three.
I killed the kids, folks, I think.
Number one, compensatory damages. Instructions, fill in both numbers for each plaintiff and go.
Now remember, I'm in bankruptcy. We got two years of appeals. The money you donate does not go to these people. It goes to fight this fraud and it goes to stabilize the company. They wanna shut down. That's why the, 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 the ambulance chasers did this, why they use these families. So saveinfowars.com, we're fighting Goliath. We'll win because of you. Saveinfowars.com, infowarstore.com, double Patriot points, 10% off at 1776 right now at Infowarstore. But you see, you want somebody to fight for you? I'm doing it and you see what they do. So you want, we wanna fight? That's fine. It's your decision. But that's where we are. That's the whacked out system of the left. Did, did we hit a billion? God, and from Remington, ain't gonna be happening, ain't no money.
All right, so here he is, he goes on Steve Bannon's show, Scott, talking about a whole, oh, I only have a million, three dollars in my bank and I got this house and I got a couple of cars and I got this and we don't have the money. But his ex-wife testified how he's been siphoning money and hiding money. Trust me, they gonna, they gonna find the money. And when you hear him say, oh yeah, uh, money y'all give, don't worry, it ain't going to them, it's going to our defense. Uh, he gonna have a hard problem with more than a billion dollars, uh, two judgments against him for the lies. And then he went on Steve Bannon's show saying, well, you know, I barely talked about Sandy Hook. He was consistently calling Sandy Hook a hoax. They, he did a TV show. They got his ass on tape and that's why he lost.
And then he got in court and had to admit that it wasn't a hoax. And why would any of his follower, followers ever believe him? But that's a whole nother story. So from here, he's got a judgment. So legally, that judgment is gonna follow him and his business regardless of what his representations are. And once you get the judgment, you have to perfect the judgment. When you perfect the judgment, that means you go after his assets, his name, his property, and you attach that judgment to every asset he has, even hidden assets, because you can hire an asset investigator and wherever he's put his money or property or people in different names of his assets and his property, those investigators can find it, attach it, and they can spend a lifetime recovering it, whether they get a percentage of it or not. So it's not a matter of going into bankruptcy because now you've got bankruptcy fraud investigators. And remember, bankruptcy is a federal proceeding. DOJ has a bankruptcy section. They can also participate in it. And so while he says it's not a big deal or your money you give me isn't gonna go there, it's gonna be hard for him to even accept money for Infowars because it also is supposed to at least, under the law, go towards satisfying this judgment. So he's got big, big, big ass problems. It's not that simple. Everything he generates now is gonna go to these families or there will be pressure on him to hide those assets. Oh, and by the way, hiding your assets to avoid a judgment is illegal in this country. Booyah.
Uh, uh, Nola, uh, what, uh, a, a professional grifter like Charlie Kirk, uh, who had, who supports Alex Jones, this was this dumbass tweeted, this isn't about calculating real damages from Alex Jones. This is about sending a message. If you upset the regime, they will destroy you completely and utterly forever. No, what it means, uh, Noah, if yo ass lie and you basically call this a hoax and one of the people who got some of this judgment today was an FBI agent, this fool sat there and he pushed a lie and by saying Sandy Hook's was a hoax, when these families were grieving the loss of their children, well, guess what? This is a perfect example of why Dominion is suing Fox News and Newsmax and OAN. All of these people have gotten away with lies and they have followed Donald Trump and the Republican Party, lying, lying, lying. And I'm glad to see Dominion saying, hell no, we not settling. And these families going to court now, they now have to run. And this fool, every time he say, oh, y'all give money, don't worry, it's not going to them. Oh, trust me, they gonna go after his punk ass.
And the thing about it is, was so infuriating is that they are so dug in and they keep running their mouths. Like they are coming for all your things, all of your things, and you are still running your mouth. And so for me, I'm really, really happy that there's this level of accountability, you know, like he's gonna have to pay and continue to pay and continue to pay. But for me, I think about the long-term damage that's done, even reading that tweet from, from, um, that, that you just showed, using the term regime, you know, as a political scientist, that hits me in a particular way because you are dissent, you, you are, first of all, you're gaslighting, you know, people who follow the, those sorts of, those sorts of personalities. And the real problems, the real things that are happening in this country, they are going to their people and kinda demeaning and kind of treating them, you know, to these sorts of things as if, um, yes, these things are happening, but it's happening from the people you are trusting. And that's the part of it for me that really, really kinda bothers me. I'm happy in one way that yes, the courts come for all the things, honey, come for everything, right? But they are still running their mouths and they still have audiences and people who are truly buying into this. And that's the part for me, when I try to think through solutions, when I try to think through, okay, yet you can make a dent in his pocket, you can humiliate him, you can maybe top away a little bit of his audience, but they still have people that believe these things. So for me, I'm like, what does it take? What does it take? You know, because we are talking about a large swath of America. We are no longer just talking about the fringes of America. So we just can't throw this away as if it doesn't matter. It matters. And so what, what does it take? What does it take to pull, to pull down, you know, the, the curtain, to expose Oz, as Kevin DeLeon had referred to regarding black people? What does it take for them to see that the emperor truly does not have on any clothes? Trust me, I don't wanna think about that. Keep your clothes on. But what will it take to bring these people, you know, sort of speak to the light? Because these people are lying to them, gaslighting them and continually taking their money. And, you know, I have family members in the deep south who kinda like believe these people. So in a way, I take it personally. And I'm trying to figure out, how do you, what, how do you undo this? How do you unplug these people from this treacherous matrix?
And that's the thing here, Clea, what we're dealing with is, we're dealing with people who are absolutely lying and the people who are listening to it, these are the people who they are now weaponizing to attack, uh, electors, attack voter registration campaigns. These, Alex Jones, the Charlie Kirk's of the world, people who listen to them, is why I wrote White Fear. They absolutely despise what's happening in this country and these folks are listening to them. They are, they are driving them and these people believe these liars and they are now proven liars. And guess what? Go after every damn cent.
I'm not sure, I wanna get back to the Sandy Hook and Alex in a moment, but I'm not sure that these people believe him or care if he's lying. I mean, we all saw what happened with Donald Trump, who got caught lying a billion times before he even became president and was voted in anyway. I personally don't think the issue is whether they're lying or not. The white supremacy phenomenon depends on deception and delusion and desperation. And all they need is somebody with a platform who can, who is so-called charismatic, who has a white supremacy or a white control or a white power agenda. That's enough. Lie all you want to, as long as you got our back. Cause we worried about, as you, as your book is entitled, In Person of White Fear, we're worried about our elimination, we're worried about our irrelevance, we're worried about losing our position as the controllers of the Western world. So they don't care about liars. When Donald Trump said, I'm gonna make America great again, he almost, he almost created a frenzy to, to push the button for his, for his voting as president. So, so when Alex Jones has, is lying, I don't think, think that's, uh, anybody's concern who falls into his culture. However, now he knows not to mess with white child murder narratives and realities. White children are precious and you can't be saying they didn't die. You can't be saying they weren't hurt. You can't say they weren't being killed. That's not gonna go. And frankly, I think that's the predominant insult that he made because white people are having a hard time and it's statistically proven, particularly in the Midwest, having a hard time reproducing. And you gonna, and, and we want our white kids to live, you gonna make a mockery out of a mass murder of, of white children? No, you have to be punished at least, even if we, even if we agree with your desire to keep whites in control.
Oh, I, I tell you what, I, I think the way to end this segment, somebody sent me this the video the other day and I absolutely needed to laugh. Uh, and so this video right here, I fundamentally believe, um, explains what Alex Jones did and what he is now experiencing. Please, y'all, enjoy.
Today we're gonna talk about how we can find out and how much we can find out and what it takes to get there. So first we have to decide, how much do we wanna find out? So let's say in this case, I wanna find out at a level of seven. Okay? So I find that level on my graph and I come horizontally to my gradient line, where it intersects with my gradient line, I'm gonna come straight down to where it intersects with my fuck around line. That there is gonna tell me how much I have to fuck around to find out what I need to find out. See, as you can see, the more you fuck around, the more you're gonna find out. And also, if you stay down here and you never fuck around, you'll never find out. So I hope this lesson is helpful. Thank you.
I'm sorry, y'all, I had to play that one. That was, to me, that was just perfect.
Fuck around unless you're fine. Hi, Roland.
That was deep, that was deep intellectual analysis, admit, admit, that was deep intellectual analysis.
Hey, so the doctor on the panel, if that makes sense to you, I see you laughing. So, the doctor on the panel, if that makes sense to you, I see you laughing as well.
That turns totally--
No, it don't make no sense.
I'm sorry, y'all, that was funny as hell. I had to play that one. All right, time for TED Talk.
The X, Y axis.
Time for TED Talk, come on. Oh, he found out. Okay, all right, okay. Let me do TED Talks. All right, y'all, the first OTT streaming platform created by, funded by, and dedicated to black women is now up and running. It is called the BW. We curate classic and essential content to uplift black female filmmakers, voices who typically face more obstacles in obtaining funding and distribution. Joining me now is the founder of the BW, Rika Hill Turner. Rika, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you, Roland? It's really nice to meet you. Thanks for having me on the show.
All right, so when you, when you conceived this idea and say, you know what, I think it's time to do this.
Well, you know, I did a film back in 2015. Well, 2013, I started it. It was called Just Extensions. And I had it distributed on Amazon and iTunes through a third-party distributor. That company went out of business and stole my money, the $40,000 that I had made off the film, and it left the film homeless. The film Just Extensions was a documentary that went to six countries that explored the world of hair extensions. Through that journey, I was able to get exclusive footage in Tarnish, in India, I was in Malaysia, Brazil, China, getting exclusive footage about hair extensions. This film later turned into a reference piece for schools and hair enthusiasts. So, it still got me a lot of interviews and things like that. So, I was deciding, like, there has to be a place out here where I could submit my content with the whole push with more diversity and underrepresented talent. There had to be a platform where at least I could submit my, my films to find a home for it. But there wasn't. So, that's kind of how I birthed the BW Network.
So, and so you launched it and what types of shows are on? Are they all entertainment shows or, or is it a mix of entertainment, news? What you got?
So, the BW Network is, is a combination of a couple of things. Basically, we have celebrating black women, which kind of celebrates the stories produced, directed, and starring black women. So, that would include, like we see right now, the Peace, Consultations, and Consultations with Nobe Brown. We have a BW original show called The Undoing, with the first episode premiering last week with Pastor Sarah Jakes Roberts. We have travel shows, we're dealing with, partnering with a lot of influencers and content creators who have license, who have completed content that will be put on the platform that may have, didn't get submitted, didn't get accepted into film festivals, you know, they don't find a home for them, they have these screenings, but they're no longer being streamed anywhere. So, the BW is a platform where, you know, you had a completed document, completed content that can now be streamed on our platform.
All right.
And we know that even with live television, like the BW Live from concerts, red carpets, where we're typically not represented.
Got it. All right, questions from the panel. Nola, you first.
I absolutely love this. Thank you so much. You know, just recently, I produced my own talk show for five years, you know, so I definitely understand the grind of trying to house your content, you know, trying to get people interested in your content, especially if your content has a positive, you know, sort of message. And I'm just so grateful that you stuck to your guns and you kept going because a lot of people give up. So, that's so important to what you did. So, my question is, what, what does your original programming look like? Like, are you accepting like original scripts or are you looking to like already kind of bring in content that already existed in other spaces? Like, so what does your original content looking like?
So, our original content is what we're producing ourselves, which is The Undoing, our first show. We also have another show, Sincerely Love, which is a scripted show. And we also have Just Cannabis, which will be a interview-type show. In addition to that, we are partnering with content creators who have content that isn't placed anywhere. So, we will license that content and we will put it on our platform.
Awesome. Thank you.
Cleo.
Wow, the iconography of your show and your imagery, is your show, is your network primarily black women-based?
This shit called as BW. Cleo's called Black Women.
Well, let me, I have, I have a question. Let me, let me, leave me alone and let me ask my question.
This shit is called BW. What you think BW stand for?
But that doesn't mean--
I know, Cleo, go ahead. Look, you know, look, I'm gonna mess with your ass. You say, is it targeted? Go ahead, Cleo.
I thought I gave you a chance to talk, sister. Congratulations.
I'm listening.
And I love, I love the iconography and what, and what you're doing. My question, if he gonna let me do it, is, are you, one of my concerns is, from my perspective, there is an attempt by the larger culture to devalue black male and female relationships, or black males and females loving each other. As a matter of fact, in most films and most corporate advertisements now, I was in a bank up in a black, black city in a, in a bank where almost all advertising was showing black people with white people, there were none that showed black people with black people. All that to say, is any of your production work considering doing things that could help inspire and deflect the attempts by the larger culture to put a wrench between black men and women loving each other?
Absolutely. And, you know, I'm so glad you said that because our executive team, we're all married women and we all have these great relationships where we have great men supporting us, supporting our dreams. And we definitely want to showcase what black love looks like, what black families look like, and what black success looks like. And we have a show called Becoming a BW where we take a deep dive into what it took for us to become this network. So, our platform will have a variety of things that black, black families face through the eyes of black women. So, we have all of these circumstances from our children to our husbands, to our schools, to our mental health, to our personal health. And we wanted to now attract programming that directly talks to us and speaks to us in our community. You know, when I think about the shows that we see on TV, to your point, when we think about the Married to Madison's and the wives, what I want to see are black women who actually can give us resources to resolve some of these issues, you know, early detection, things about your IEP with kids who have learning disabilities and things like that, how to do things. And I think the BW will lead by example, by showing people, giving them an inside look at exactly how we're building this. As an OTT streaming platform yourself, you understand what it takes to build that and the voice that we need to try to, I mean, and the space that we need to try to create in this industry. You know, I want it to be, when I thought about doing this and trying to get the word out, I have been an entrepreneur for well over 15 years and Essence and Ebony has always been a place where I could pitch my ideas, I mean, pitch my stories, pitch my businesses, and they always welcome with an open arms. But we don't have that in the digital space. And to your point, Roland, black media matters and that's why the BW is here because we do matter. The voice of the black woman matters and our stories matters. And I'm hopeful that this platform will kind of be a place to discover the talent that we won't see. So, that's what my mission is with the BW Network.
Scott?
Awesome program, without a doubt. What, where can I watch the BW? What platforms are you on and how do I tell my daughters and granddaughter to watch?
Well, you can tell them. They can go to the BW.com and on the BW.com, you can see all the place, all our platforms where we're streaming. We have Roku, Apple TV, Amazon, Chrome, Roku. So, we are six devices that you can download and stream on any device from the App Store.
I'll watch and I'll let them know, I promise you.
Please let them spread the word and tell them--
He don't even know how to download. What you talking, don't even--
Oh, here we--
I don't even--
Oh, don't stop. You got a nice guest on. We will need all that.
I'm sure he knows how to download.
No, he don't.
Of course I do. Thank you.
No, he don't.
Very much. And if I don't, my daughters will tell--
No, he don't. He a Kappa. He ain't got no clue how to download. He can't download, he can't not download the Kappa app. He don't know. He don't know. He don't know. All right, y'all.
Well, started.
The, the, look, I'm gonna start and I'm gonna finish. All right, the--
Every show, you start.
What? What? You know I ain't lying. The OTT app, y'all, is called the BW. Download it on all available platforms, Rika. We certainly appreciate it. Good luck and congratulations on the launch.
Thank you so much for having me. Bye, everybody. Have a good night.
All right, have a good one. All right, folks, that is it for us. We will see y'all, first of all, it was, first of all, let me thank Nola, let me thank Scott, let me thank Cleo for being on the show. Cleo, you now realize it's a network for black women. Okay, so, just saying, I mean--
It talks about black men's issues and black men and women's issues and hopefully talks about our diversity as black people.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you now know it's a network for black women because this shit is called a BW.
The BW. Alpha, that mean, the BW.
All right. All right, y'all, thanks a lot.
For the record, I never asked what the show was about. I still wouldn't ask.
I know, Nola, did Nola just have one of them, one of them red cups, like, like, at a park? Did you have, oh, it's a red mug. I thought you had one of them damn red dicks--
That's the Kappa cup.
One of them red solo cup. I was about to say, I mean, you are from New Orleans.
See, shots fired. I was sitting here being peaceful, drinking my tea, minding my little--
What? I'm just, I'm sorry. I'm interrupting your green tea moment.
He wants to get it on. He wants to get it on.
You know Roland don't like peace.
You see how he started? I come in peace, brother.
What? Oh, hell no.
Not with him.
Hell no. I don't wake--
For whatever reason, he wants to get on this--
Hell no.
You better be ready.
I'll wake up fighting.
I see, can you wake up, violent?
In the words of Seth Entertainer, "I wish a motherfucker would." All right, y'all, we, I sure did. I know some of y'all out there talking about All Stop Cussing My Show. The show's called Unfiltered, okay? Damn. I told y'all that. All right, Chastity, Renee, Deborah Ferguson, Alice, Jeffrey Davis, Stephanie Avent, Terrell Brown, Marie Bromel, Reginald Hudson, Justine Marable, Veronica Whitaker, Nanette White, Richard Pettigrew, Nikita Walton, Joel Clark, Annette Joseph, Anthony Mosley, Michael Pryor, Phillips, Jamelle Wallace, all of you, thanks for giving during the show. Jameela Haynes, thank you so very much. Let me see here, that was all the folks who gave via Cash App. Terry Kenlock gave via Altamis Akiva. These are all the PayPal people. Let me see here, hold up, hold up, hold up. Who is this here? I'm looking for their name. Why is her name? Jane Rand, thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Let me go over here, who gave via Zelle. Let me check that out. Oops, let me go right back. Zelle, here we go. Type that in. All right then, Alitha Garrett, Annette Anderson, Kyle White, Garleon Watts, April Wright, Robert Shade, Tamara Wright, thank you so very much for all giving during the show. Sharon Allen, thank you so very much, Sharon. Let me also get in, Diop Van Collet. Let's see here, Devon Slaughter, thank you so very much. Let's see here, Brenda Nelson, Jake Harris, Tanjo Properties, Tango Properties, I'm sorry. And let's see here, I think I got one more. Let me get this in. Adrian Swan, thanks a lot as well. All of y'all who gave to our Bring the Funk Fan Club during the show, download the app, folks. Apple, Apple phone, Android phone, Apple TV, Android TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, Xbox One, Samsung Smart TV, and of course, join our Bring the Funk Fan Club. Send checking, checking money orders to P.O. Box 57196, Washington DC, 20037-0196. Cash App is $1 sign, RM Unfiltered. PayPal's RM Unfiltered. Venmo is RM Unfiltered. Zelle, Roland@RolandSMartin.com, Roland@RolandMartinUnfiltered.com. And don't forget to get your copy of my book, White Fear, How the Brownies of Americans Making White Folks Lose Their Minds. You can get it at Ben Bella Books, Amazon, Barnes &amp; Noble, IndieBound, Bookshop, Chapters, Books-A-Million, Target. You can get it through your favorite black bookstore or you can download the Audible version as well. Folks, thank you so very much. Shout to the friends that have Black Voters Matter. We support them, we stand with them.